I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Village of Skokie zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is created by statutes of the state of Illinois and by the ordinances of the Village of Skokie for the purpose of granting proper case relief from the strict terms of our zoning ordinances. The decision of this board to either grant or deny relief will be based upon the evidence presented to it and how that evidence is related to the standards for granting relief. All persons who have an interest in the case, either as a petitioner or as a member of the public, either supporting or opposing the petition, or as an independent witness, will be given a chance to speak on the record and to express his or her points of view. The zoning board of appeals is not a court of law and therefore, we do not follow the strict rules of evidence. However, this hearing will be conducted in such a manner as to hear only competent evidence or statements. Questions as to procedure, interpretation, and of the admissibility of statements or evidence will be ruled upon by Corporation Counsel Tyler Kobelski and his legal decisions will be binding upon this board. Certain cases require covenant running with the land. This will be prepared and recorded by the Village of Skokie Legal Department and this is done at the petitioner's expense. Whether or not a covenant is required is a determination to be made by the Corporation Counsel at the conclusion of each individual case. If a covenant running with the land is required, it cannot, or will not, be prepared until our court reporter has returned to the zoning board of appeals a transcript of these proceedings. The Village of Skokie will notify each petitioner when the covenant has been prepared and is ready for signature. No building permits can be applied for or issued until a covenant is signed by the petitioner. Should a petition for variation be denied, or should a covenant not be required, the Board of Trustees will authorize a refund of any required fees. Should it be necessary for the petitioner to request a continuance due to the lack of preparation, a case continuation fee of one-half of the original application fee is due prior to the rehearing date. This request must be made before any testimony begins. All petitioners must receive a vote of the majority of the zoning board present in order to decide any matter under consideration. Our normal full complement is nine members, however, tonight's complement is eight members, making five votes necessary to make a determination on a petition. Okay. Tonight, we have two cases. We have 2019-02Z, 9502 Longdale Avenue, and 2019-03Z, 4339 Dempster Street. And in the instance of both cases, I'll ask Corporation Counsel, has proper notice been served and notarized?
Notice is proper and correct in both cases.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see. Okay, before we delve into the cases for the evening, in our packet, we have the minutes from our meeting of May 1st, 2019, which basically was a continuation due to lack of preparation to tonight's meeting of the case. So, it's pretty self-explanatory. There's nothing really here, but in the interest of doing some proper housework, the chair will entertain a motion for the minutes to be approved. Azaz?
I make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Jacobson, everybody in favor, voice vote please?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Minutes of the last meeting are approved. Thank you, Marlene, as always. So, okay. All right, we'll go ahead and we'll proceed with 2019-02Z, 9502 Longdale Avenue. Is the petitioner here for that case? Sir, would you please go ahead and step up to the podium? And while you're doing so, I believe Commissioner Shaw is presenting your case tonight. So, Mike, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 2019-02Z, 9502 Longdale Avenue. Michael and Megan Roach, Maura Roach, and Kevin Roach as the beneficiary of the Michael B. Roach Trust. On behalf of Kirill Mirintinchev, request a variation in order to construct a one-story addition resulting in the continuation of the existing 4.89-foot north side yard and combined side yard equalling 15.6 percent rather than nine-foot minimum north side yard and 20 percent minimum combined side yard as required by Section 118-1116B of the zoning chapter of the Skokie Village Code in R1 Single Family District. I will read in the petitioner's statement. Number one, there is a limitation on use of the property due to physical, anthropographical, and geological features. There are no such a limitation. The building currently has these outlines. The proposal optimize the use of the already roof rear porch with a column at the northwest corner by converting it into mudroom and pantry needed by the new owner's larger family. Number two, without a variation, there can be no reasonable use of the property. The building currently has these outlines. The proposal optimize the use of the already roof rear porch with a column at the northwest corner by converting it into mudroom and pantry needed by the new owner's larger family. Number three, the request is not based solely on economic reason. The proposal optimize the use of the building for the new owners. There is no intent to sell in the near future. Number four, the property owner did not create the necessity for the variance. The building was recently inherited by the new owners. The existing building footprint was created by the previous owner. Number five, the request is the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The proposal encloses the roof rear porch to create a mudroom and a pantry necessary for the larger family of the new owners. Number six, the request will not be injurious to the public health, safety, or welfare. There are no proposed features that will diminishes property value or create unhealthy or hazardous situation. The subject site possesses one or more unique characteristic. I have a couple. No objection later. This one is from a son, Kevin Matthew, and was dated March 11. And also from a daughter, Maura Allen Roach, also dated March 11, 2019. And I also have a letter of authorization from Megan Roach and Michael Roach. I will just read it in. With the undersigned owner of the property at 9502 Longdale, Evanston, Illinois, 60203 authorized Kirill Mirintinchev, 3309 Simpson Street, Evanston, Illinois, 60201 to represent us in front of the Skokie zoning board of the appeals during zoning variance proceeds for the above said property. And for the record, I have a forestry division report. The forestry division has no objection to the petitioner's request, but has the following comments. Number one, tree protection fencing is required for three parkway trees for this construction project. Number two, parkway tree planting is not required for this project. Number three, it is recommended that pruning and tree protection for existing multi-stem crab apple at southeast corner of the home. Number four, a tree removal permit is required prior to demo for the maple tree on the west side on the house adjacent to the new second-floor addition. The bond for this tree is $1,500. Please see attached Skokie Tree Preservation and Removal Packet for details. Report for Fire Department. The Fire Department has no objection to the petitioner's request. If the addition is greater than 50 percent of the existing floor area, a sprinkler will be required throughout the entire house. And I also would like to mention some other stuff here. The community development department is supportive of the petitioner's request. The existing building is non-conforming and the proposed one-story addition is rebuilt of an existing porch in the same location. The side yard is not being further reduced. The proposed addition should have no negative impact on the neighbors and will be constructed to meet all current building code regulation. While reviewing the plate of survey of the subject site, it was found that patio and fence was installed in the public right-of-way. Staff has no record of permits for this obstruction. If the variation is granted, staff will recommend it to removal of the patio and fence from the public right-of-way.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Can you spell your name, or tell us your name and spell it so we have it for the record?
I'm Kirill Mirintinchev. I'm the project architect.
Okay. Great. And then, if you would, real quick, just raise your hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief?
I do.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Please tell us why we're here tonight, sir.
Well, this is a renovation and addition to the building. And at the northwest corner, there is a small piece that we are actually remodeling from an existing roof porch with a column at this corner into a mudroom. So, we're enclosing this area so that it could be used better, and this is the new owner's wish. I mentioned a couple of times in our statement that recently, the change of ownership from an old couple into a full family requires certain changes in the building, and this is one of the, I would say, minor changes at the northwest corner. It is less than 15 percent, if I have to answer the Fire Department question, and it's simply made for convenience of the new owners, adding mudroom and a door to the backyard. So, everything else that was noticed by the building department, the owners are well aware of that, and all the things and precautions about the trees and the removal of the tree, this will be taken in care in the process of the construction, actually before that. So, this is what I can introduce to you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Shaw, would you, the petitioner has opened up with his presentation.
Sure. I'd just like to bring it to your attention that we have no record of any permits, that fence and...
Yes.
So, you're aware of that now. If we may ask you to remove, that it be okay with you, or?
Well, I am answering on the, let's say, on the owner's behalf. They are aware of that, and I know that they will be willing to do everything so that they can fulfill the construction.
Okay.
And I know that this will be prerequisite, I believe, with the building department.
So, by any day, if you move that fence and patio, how many square foot they will add into 20 percent, like, minimum requirement? I'm sorry? Okay, if they remove those fence and patio, it will add any more square foot to the minimum requirement, like 20 percent requirement?
Well, no, the fence and the patio that isn't, is the fence and patio in the right-of-way. It's just a removal of the fence and patio that's in the public right-of-way south of the house. I'll show you on the survey.
And if I can add, the calculations of the areas is without this. My point is that all the calculations were done without the area that is out of the property.
Yeah, the building coverage will still meet the code requirement. The impermeable surface will still meet the code requirement unless they're going to add more additionally that's not shown. But the removal of the fence and patio from the right-of-way, even if they have to adjust the patio and walkway a little bit, it'll be minimal addition if that. It's most likely going to be a removal, or it'll stay the same as proposed. So, I don't see any issues with the land coverage for building or impermeable surfaces.
Oh, okay. Sorry, are we talking...
Yeah, Commissioner Arden.
This is about floor area ratio or side yard setback?
The request, the variation request is for the north side yard, but during the review process, we've discovered that some of the patio and walkway are in the right-of-way, and if they have to adjust the patio a little bit, it shouldn't impact the building coverage or impermeable surface coverage.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner at all? So, there was one question that I had, and maybe staff can help me out with this one too as well. Under the comments from the forestry division, number four talked about the tree removal permit for the maple tree on the west side of the house adjacent to the new second-floor addition. The bond for this tree is $1,500. Is that basically under all codes and ordinances will be fully and strictly complied with?
Yeah, that would fall under, if they're going to remove the tree, yes, they'd have to put up a bond. That would fall under all other codes and ordinances. That's a requirement in the code.
No, but I'm sorry, let me maybe make myself a little bit more clear. Is the, is that tree removal subject? Is that just a request being made by forestry, or is that something that's actually mandated?
Well, if they're going to remove the tree that's in the back where the addition is going or near, I'm not sure the exact location of the tree in relation to the addition. If they're going to remove it, they have to put up the $1,500 bond. If they were to install another tree or trees, they can get all or most of that money back. That is a refundable bond. If they forego it, the money goes into a fund where we plant trees.
Yeah, got it. But what I'm saying is that forestry isn't mandating the removal of this particular tree?
I don't know where the tree is. If the tree is removed, it will be a requirement. I don't know.
Right, okay.
I believe the tree is going to be removed due to the location, the proximity to the addition.
Yeah. Because now, the only reason why I ask is whether or not that needs to be made a condition upon approval of the petitioner's request or not?
It would fall under all other codes and ordinances. If they're going to remove the tree because of the addition, the construction work, they have to put up the bond due to the size of the tree.
Okay, all right. Good enough. We'll leave it at that then.
So, if you remove one tree, they have to add one tree, right? If they...
Can I interfere?
Yeah, please do.
So, currently, the tree is there, and the current single-story addition is built with the tree over there. So, we are adding to this single-story addition a little bit further away from the tree. So, we don't know during the excavation whether the roots of the tree will be on our way. But if they are, we'll have probably to cut the tree, because if we cut the roots, it will die itself. So, it is still if condition, but if we have to cut it, of course, all the procedures will be done.
Okay. So, right, so you realize that yourself, that maybe during the course of construction, the tree may have to be removed depending on what you run into?
I do.
Understood. Okay, great. Any other questions for the petitioner at all? Sir, the only thing, and obviously, this is something that we've discussed already, we'll make as a condition of the approval of your request, the fence and the paver walk patio must be completely removed from the public right-of-way. So...
Sure.
Okay.
I understand.
All right. If there's nothing else, then the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to grant a variation. Mr. Chairman, I propose the following in the granting of the variance to the petitioner as follow. That Michael and Megan Roach, Maura Roach, and Kevin Roach as the beneficiary of the Michael B. Roach Trust is the owner of the lot describing the case number 2019-02Z for the property located at 9502 Longdale Avenue, Skokie, Cook County, Illinois. That said, lot is plotted lot of record and is abutted by single family due link on the east-west Longdale Avenue. The determination has been made in which petitioner's request is consistent with majority of the finding in fact, as stated in the Village of Skokie zoning chapter. I therefore propose that variance be granted to the petitioner for giving failure to comply with the requirement of the zoning ordinance of the Village of Skokie as amended as side yard requirement. That the petitioner be granted the variance to Michael and Megan Roach, Maura Roach, and Kevin Roach as the beneficiary of the Michael B. Roach Trust. On behalf of Kirill Mirintinchev, request the variation in order to construct a one-story addition resulting in the continuation of the existing 4.89-foot north side yard and combined side yard equalling 15.6 percent rather than nine-foot minimum north side yard and 20 percent minimum combined side yard as required by Section 118-1116B of the zoning chapter of the Skokie Village Code in R1 Single Family District. With the condition, the fence and paver walk patio must be completely removed from the public right-of-way. That all other codes and ordinance of the Village of Skokie shall be fully and strictly complied with.
Okay. All right. Well done, Michael. We have a motion to approve with the condition of the patio and paver being removed from the public right-of-way. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Perlin seconds the motion, so the chair will go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Solovy?
Aye.
Commissioner Arden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Perlin?
Yes.
And the chair will vote aye. So, in a case, in a matter of case number 2019-02Z, the motion, their request for the variation has been approved with the condition. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Corporation Counsel, what does the petitioner need to know from here on out?
We will work on preparing the covenant and running with the land. It should be ready hopefully within the next couple of weeks, and then we'll get it over to you for the signature of the property owners.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good luck with the construction, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome. Okay, great. Now, we'll go ahead and we'll move forward with our second case of the night. 2019-03Z, 4339 Dempster Street. Petitioner, care to come up to the podium? And while you're doing that, I...
Mr. Chairman, I think we forgot, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think we've got to swear everybody in.
I will do that once we ask him his name and spell it for the record. We have a minimal attendance tonight, so I figured I'd do it individually rather than en masse. But yes, thank you for noting that. And while the petitioner's up at the podium, Commissioner Solovy is presenting your case tonight. So, David, go ahead. The floor is yours.
This is 2019-03Z, 4339 Dempster Street, Skokie, Illinois. Is it Mozy Ille? Is that how you pronounce it?
Moses.
Mo-Ile?
Ille.
Requested variation in order to construct a one-story addition resulting in the continuation of the existing 6.03-foot west side yard and combined side yards equalling 14.66 percent rather than the nine-foot minimum west side yard and 20 percent minimum combined side yards as required by Section 118-111, parentheses 6B of the zoning chapter of the Skokie Village Code in an R1 Single Family District. Okay, let me read the petitioner's statement. Soon as I find it.
It's in there.
I know. Here we go. Petitioner's statement. One, there is a limitation on use of the property due to the physical, topographical, and geographic, geological features. The new addition represents the continuation of existing structure. The existing structure is illegal, nonconforming, and 6.03 side setback. The proposed additions at rear and front of the building are not further increasing the nonconformity, but they align to the existing structure based on structural and construction facility. Two, without a variance, there can be no reasonable use of the property. The proposed first-floor addition to the existing one-story building is also extended towards the rear side of the attic area in order to prepare the conditions for future use. This area is counted toward, towards the floor area ratio. Construction-wise, the proposed roofing and attic addition is facilitated by the side setback alignment of the proposed and existing first floor. Three, the request is not based solely on economic reasons. The property represents the owner's personal residence, and they have no intent on selling neither before nor after the remodeling. Four, the property owner did not create the necessity for the variance. The existing structure is documented with photos and a copy of the official survey. Five, the request is the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The proposal is not extending the existing nonconformity, structural and construction related reasons conceived the foundation for the request. Six, the request will not be injurious to public health, safety, or welfare. The existing property is surrounded by Evanston Golf Course on all three sides except the north access from Dempster Street. The large size of the lot creates both a visual barrier and a landscaping opportunity. The proposal is intended to open towards the exterior landscape of the rear where the major addition also occurs. The addition is visible from the west and south from Evanston Golf Course, and it is integrated into a coherent aesthetic by changing all the exterior wall finishes. The front addition is also integrated into the main facade. It maintains the existing roofline already overhanging extensively above the building line. The existing front bay window is removed. In addition to this, the east shed structure attached to the garage is proposed for demolition. No permit was filed or filed, and it could represent a safety issue along with a noncompliant side setback. Seven, the subject site possesses one or more unique characteristics generally not applicable to similarly situated properties. The property is unique by its surroundings and neighboring. Three sides of the property consist of Evanston Golf Club, which offers great views towards east and a public access, and parking towards the west. The site area is about half an acre, while the proposed structure is only 3, 3,360 square feet with 4,470 square feet included in future use attic. That's it. Bud, do you want me to talk about the other?
Yeah, David, if you would, just read in the excerpts from forestry division and the community development department.
Okay.
I know, I know, it's a little bit of a read, but...
Forestry Division has no objection to petitioner's request, but has comments. When a tree survey were required to be submitted with the building permit application, please provide an existing tree survey. There are multiple trees on site that may or may not need to be removed. A survey of all trees eight inches or greater would be helpful to determining what is to A tree removal permit is required prior to demolition for any trees removed for the project. I'm going to skip the three. The tree protection fencing is required for several trees for this construction project. Any trees not to be removed for the project require protection. Community Development Department, staff only concerns is the existing attached garage and breezeway. If there is no foundation underneath both structures, the foundation will need to be added because it is attached to the principal buildings. If that is the case, the wall may or may not have to be rebuilt. If a foundation is added and a garage and breezeway must be rebuilt, staff would like to see the side yards closer to the 20 percent minimum requirement. This is because I'm the longest-serving person on here, they give me the longest in the read. It's not on purpose. Okay. Staff recommendations, conditions. A tree survey were required to be submitted with the building permit application. Two, if the garage and breezeway walls need to be rebuilt, then the garage must be at least 12 feet from the east sideline resulting in combined side yards equalling 15.67 percent.
Thank you, David.
Okay.
Have some water.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, very good. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I know we've kind of glossed over it temporarily, but can you please tell us your name and spell it so we have it for the record?
My name is Moses Ille. It's spelled M-O-I-S-E, and the last name is I-L-L-E.
Okay, very good. Could you raise your right hand? Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, please proceed and tell us why we're here tonight.
So, we're here, thank you for...
Yeah. Yeah, of course, certainly.
Requesting a variation on the addition 250 some odd square feet. So because of the setback on the, the west side over there, you know, the, originally I would like to square it off. I think that's the best look for, for the addition. You know, I, you know, I think that would be the best, best way to, to do this addition rather than having a corner to comply with the nine-foot distance. So that's, that's pretty much it.
That's pretty much it, the petitioner says?
I, if I could have my representative, my architect, if she...
Sure, of course. Everybody's welcome to come up and, and...
She's probably better at this than I am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can, can we have your name and spell it so we have it for the record, please?
My name is Juana Hergela-Giou.
All right, very good. And can you raise your hand, please? Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Okay.
The proposal is for adding some more square footage to the existing one-story residence. The additions we are proposing are towards the rear and in the front. The existing building had a bay in the front. We are removing that and adding another overhang in that corner with a 6.03 setback while towards the rear, it's a little bit bigger. From a construction point of view, it would be easier for us to have destruction going up on a straight line and having the future use in the attic built on a single footing line just because it makes more sense from a construction point of view. The existing house had that shed over here would increase the non-conformity, and we're proposing that for removal in order to be closer to, to the requirements. About the existing garage, the owner checked the footing. It seems like there is a footing, but he'll have a scan of the actual conditions and we'll submit that with the permit drawings when we...
Okay, so as, as of this point, you're not, you're, you're unsure as to what lies beneath?
We've seen the footing, but we don't know the deep.
Right, okay.
We'll have a scan of that and see what's going on and how deep it goes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, very important.
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Solovy.
How long will this take to complete this project? Any idea?
I estimate about 12 months. Hopefully sooner.
Has there been any comment from the golf course at all there and then about this at all, are they?
The staff?
We, we haven't heard any comments from them. They were, they were notified, so they were one of the, well, the golf course abuts this lot on the east, west and south. So they were notified in some of the home, in some of the homes to the north across Dempster. So I, I personally heard nobody come in to question the addition from the golf course or from neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
We also have on the side the parking lot and towards the rear, we have 43 feet setback and there's a tree line between the property and the golf course for now. We don't know any complaint from them.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the petitioner at all? There, there were, in our recommendations from staff for, as far as your case was concerned, there were a couple of requirements that, that they would like to see happen if we were to approve the request. And the one was a tree survey will be required to be submitted with the building permit application. And then two, I think this is something that we've kind of touched on a little bit, but this kind of goes in, in depth a little bit more with what we were talking about earlier. If the garage and the breezeway walls need to be rebuilt, then the garage must be at least 12 feet from the east side lot line resulting in a combined side yards equalling 15.67 percent. So is that, is that amenable to, as part of the request?
Yeah, and that, and that condition is only if the garage walls actually are going to be rebuilt.
Right, and that's, and that's, that's dependent on how deep the footings are.
Correct, so, yeah, correct. So in, that way, we would get closer to the combined 20 percent. It wouldn't, it would, it wouldn't shrink the garage too much, but it would, it would bump it over another foot to get closer to the requirement, but with the understanding that the existing attached garage and breezeway are, it's, the combined side yards are substandard slightly. This would help us get closer to the requirement, but not completely limit them and, you know, kill any chances of having a two-car garage with a breezeway still.
Got it.
And again, it's only dependent if they're rebuild, rebuilding the walls. If they don't have to touch them, then it's, they can keep the setback as is with the shed to be removed.
Right, yeah. Well, hopefully, hopefully you'll find out that everything is proper and correct and you won't have to do anything extraordinary as far as that's concerned, but that way we're covered, so. All right. Any other questions for the petitioner? Anything else? Anything else you'd like to close with or? I, I just, I just, I would just like to say is, you know, it, it's great to see that you're getting this place and redoing it. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, some of the properties around Evanston Golf Club are kind of the crown jewels, so to speak, you know, in the village of Skokie, so, you know, it's nice to see that you're doing something nice with it.
My, my goal is to make this the nicest house in the area.
All right. Awesome, great. Happy to hear that. We always like to see people take pride in homeownership and, and take it to the best of their ability, so. All right, well, if there's nothing else, then the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is a motion to grant a variation. Mr. Chairman, I propose the following finding of facts in the granting of a variation to petitioner, petitioner's files. And we're talking about Mo-Ile request. He's the owner of the lot described in this case in its 2019-03Z, 4339 Dempster Street, Skokie, Illinois, Cook County. This, that said lot is a plot of lot of record and is abutted by single-family buildings, et cetera, on the east and west side. I want to read the...
Technically, it's abutted on the east and west by the golf course and the south.
Okay. Yes. I'm going to read the, the statement itself. The petitioner requests a variation in order to instruct a one-story addition resulting in the continuation of the existing 6.03 foot west side yard and combined side yards equalling 14.66 percent rather than nine-foot minimum west side yard and a 20 percent minimum combined side yards as required by section 118-111 parentheses 6B of the zoning chapter of Skokie Village Code in R1 Single Family District. Okay, now again, going on. The determination is made that, one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return or permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zoning district. Two, the plight of the owner was not created by the owner and is due by, due to unique circumstances. Three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. I therefore oppose the variance be granted to petitioner for giving failure to comply with requirements of the zoning ordinance of the village of Skokie as amended. We're talking about front yard, side, side yard requirement, correct?
There you go.
Side yard requirement. That the petitioner be granted the variation, and we have conditions. I'll, I'll read it again, I'll read it again for the record. A variation in order to construct a one-story addition resulting in the continuation of existing 6.03 foot west side yard and combined side yards equalling 14.66 percent rather than the nine-foot minimum west side yard and a 20 percent minimum combined side yards required by section 118-111 parentheses 6B of the zoning chapter of Skokie Village Code in an R1 Single Family District. And there are two conditions also. One, a tree survey will require to be submitted with the building permit application. Two, if the garage and breezeway walls need to be rebuilt, then the garage must be at least 12 feet from the east side lot line resulting in combined side yards equalling 15.67 percent. Again, that all other codes and ordinances of the village of Skokie shall be fully and strictly complied with.
All right, well done, David. You okay?
Yeah.
All right, good. All right, we, we have the motion, we have the motion to approve with the two conditions as he noted. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All right. Commissioner Jacobson seconds. Very good, thank you. Okay. The chair will go ahead and call the roll then. Let's see. Commissioner Perlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Let's see. Commissioner Gersner?
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Arden?
Yes.
Commissioner Solovy?
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. So in the matter of 2019-03Z, the motion to grant the variation has been, with conditions has been approved unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, well done. And Corporation counsel, what does the petitioner need to know from here on out?
Like the last petitioner, we'll prepare the covenant and running with the land. It should be ready for the property owner's signature in about two weeks, and we'll let you know it's ready.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
That's it. Good luck with your construction.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. That is it for this evening. Let's see. Okay. Looks like our second meeting in June has been canceled, so for lack of cases.
Correct.
Does, what does it look like on July 3rd, staff?
We have two cases that evening.
We will have two.
Yes.
Okay, so... Well, it's going to be a busy evening for Commissioner Gersner.
July 11th.
So, that, so we'll see everybody in TV land on July 3rd for our next meeting and...
I may be late.
You may be late.
We are setting up the, the lot for the Fourth of July parade.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, at least you won't be far away.
Seventeen hundred and forty people in the parade this year.
Right, right. Okay, well, that's it. So no meeting, next meeting will be Jan, July 3rd. So that ends this meeting of the Village of Bor, the Village of Skokie Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you very much.